This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 7:01 PM on August 6, 2015. At this time, would you please join me in standing as Mr. Richard Fleming leads our opening prayer and Mr. Randy Shackman leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you continue to give us. Continue to lead and guide our districts in this new season. May you always give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. Continue to guide our students and give them the wisdom and the courage that they need as future leaders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to our goal of high achievement for all of our students. And the board uses this goal in all of our deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberation, decisions, and action of the board in open session with the exception of some items, which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, which is commonly known as the Open Meeting Act. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all board members are here with the exception of Ms. Nancy Watten. However, we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the school district. As required by our Board Policy, BBD Local, at each meeting of the board, we shall announce and the minutes shall reflect the name of each board member who has completed the required training, who has exceeded the required hours of training, and who is deficient in the required hours of training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. Let the minutes reflect at this time that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees have begun acquiring the hours required for 2015. That being said, at this time, we will now proceed with Agenda Item 2, which is a report by our superintendent and Dr. Burns. All yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goode, members of the board and to our audience. Thank you for being here tonight. I don't think it's a secret in our school district, we take student achievement pretty seriously. No, we take it really seriously. And we believe in having a conversation about the purpose of education, and we talk a lot about what to learn and how to learn it. And so, we're starting this year is that we want to have the conversation with you. So, first part of this, we want some audience participation. Ms. Warnock's going to tell you a little bit of how you do that in just a minute. But before we get started, I want to brag a little, just a little bit on our trustees up here is that every year, they two get a textbook. We give them a textbook. It's pretty thick. Actually, I have two this year. But this year's book is The 21 Trends for the 21st Century. And we really take it seriously because their work is what do we need to do to make education the best it can be for our students in CFB? Last year, they studied another textbook called How to Learn. So, how to learn and what to learn are the two things that we wrestle with in education. But they're so important to have the conversation with the community and with the people that are, well, they're the ones doing the work in this school district about that education piece. And so, we want to thank you for being here tonight. We want to thank you in advance for your participation. There will not be a test, so everybody can relax. Okay? But we do want to hear what you have to say, as well as we value so much what our trustees think about, because they're going to make the decisions and allocate the resources necessary so that we can reach that goal of high student achievement. Now, I'll be quiet and I'll give it to Ms. Warnock.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We are thrilled to be studying 21 Trends for the 21st Century by Gary Marx with the board this year. And each month, we'll be highlighting a different one of the 21 trends that Marx discusses in the text and having a little bit of discussion about how that impacts us as a district and public education. So, for tonight, our first chapter is on the depth, breadth, and purpose of education. And Marx in his book argues really that there are four essential purposes to education: citizenship and democracy, that we have public school to create good citizens of a family, community, country, and world; employability in the economy, that we help students develop the knowledge, skills, talents, and habits of mind to be employable, whether they are self-employed or work inside an organization, nonprofit, or the for-profit sector. The third purpose is leading interesting lives, that we encourage students to see the connection between what they're asked to learn and real life, noting that the more we know, the broader our experiences are, the more interesting our life becomes. And finally, a fourth purpose of education is releasing ingenuity, creativity, and innovation. And that we do that by discovering personal ingenuity of students' interests, skills, abilities, aspirations, we build on them and stimulate their creativity. So, tonight, we want to launch a discussion, continue a discussion, about what is the purpose of education? That as a community, we have to be thinking and talking about what that purpose is and how it's reflected. Too often, we think of the purpose of education as narrow and what can be easily tested versus what is truly the purpose. So, with those four, employability in economy, citizenship and democracy, leading interesting lives, or stimulating our creativity and innovation, we're going to ask our board members and our district team who is here seated at the tables over here to think about what you believe is the foremost purpose of education out of those four. And we're going to ask you to get up out of your seats, our board members and our district staff that we've invited to participate, and to come and cluster up here at the front, in front of the board that most firmly connects with what you believe the primary purpose of education is: employability, economy, citizenship, and democracy, leading interesting lives, or stimulating creativity and innovation. So, we're going to give the board and our district team one minute to think about it. Audience, we want you to join the conversation. So, we're going to ask you to turn and talk with your neighbor about what you believe the primary foremost purpose is. And then, we want to have your thinking made visible at our poll everywhere. So, after you're having a minute to talk, we want you to get out your cellphone. We want you to join the conversation by texting to the number 37607, the code. So, you'll enter that as the phone number, like who you're texting. And then, you'll text in the text message, George Anne WA292. I'm so thrilled, my parents gave me such a long name, so, to help you this evening. So, George Anne WA292. And you'll put that in the text, and then you'll get a little alert that says you've joined the conversation. And then, in the body of the second text message, what do you think the purpose of education is? And we'll see our collective thinking start to gather in a word cloud up here in front of us. So, our board members have had a minute to think. Audience, we have our tasks. You're going to turn and talk to your neighbor and then text what you think the purpose of education is. And at this time, I'll invite our board and district staff to come and gather up here in the front, and you're going to have a little dialogue about why that is the primary purpose of education.
Yes. You too.
Okay, we're going to come back together. So, we see lots of, lots of discussion here on our board, and you can see the size of our text is changing as people log in, what they think. We're going to hear just a brief statement from each of our four groups. So, we'll have Ms. Gillen start here. What did your group discuss about employability and economy?
Okay, Ms. Warnock, we discussed that for our students, if you were to ask them, what is it that you want to do once you leave school? They would unanimously say earn money. And so, that's very important to our students. So, in order for them to leave, when they leave high school, we want them to have employability skills, soft skills, certifications, licensures, so that they can leave high school and whatever their path is, whether it be college, technical school, four-year institution, that they are employable. That means a lot to our students.
All right, Ms. Webb has had the discussion about citizenship and democracy. So, what did your team say?
Without citizenship and democracy, you do not have the others. That's to sum it up. But it's the cornerstone, and that it's passed down, and you want the values to be passed down from generation to generation. And if you skip one, what would be the results of that?
All right, so, Dr. Schaefer. So, we have a boring over here. So, all right, so, Dr. Schaefer was about leading interesting lives. So, we'll ask Dr. Schaefer to share.
Without education, we're just not terribly interesting. The global world is getting a little smaller, but our connections with people in different sectors of that society is growing more complex and deeper. And if we don't have lead interesting lives, then we are not going to be able to be creative or innovative in the future.
Thank you. So, that segues way here. All right, and Michelle led our discussion on stimulating creativity and innovation.
And we discussed that creativity and innovation helps to create a well-rounded child and adult, that music will last us for a lifetime, that we need to instill those values in kids. And we also discussed that it's important as a nation that we build creative innovators because that's who are going to help drive our future, that they're going to be the thinkers. And so, we have to help them develop that, those thinking skills.
Thank you so much. And board, team, we can return to our seats. Thank you for your thinking. As we look up here on our board, it looks like our audience is really tapped into the idea of innovation, creativity, resounding is those foremost purposes of education from our audience, then with democracy and citizenship there as well. So, this is a dialogue that we want to continue. We think it's important that we keep coming back to what is the purpose of what we do every day. But nobody here said the importance and the purpose is taking narrow tests. And so, I think that's something for us to continue thinking about. We want to tune in and hear what a few voices in CFB from our administrators, teachers, and students had to say about what is the purpose of education.
We really want to prepare them for life once they leave high school. How are they going to support themselves, support their family? How are they going to fit into the community, both here in Irving and globally?
When you ask that type of question, really, you can ask a hundred different people that question, and you're probably going to get a hundred different answers. And they probably aren't going to be correct. But when I think about what is the purpose of education, I see it as our opportunity to provide students with a strong academic foundation.
The question of the purpose of education, it's a huge question, but one part of it is, I think that when we say a child is well-educated and use that term in English, we usually mean they have strong academic skills. But in Spanish, if we say a child is bien educado, we mean a child has been brought up to be a really good human being.
So, in our situation at Metza, we are an engineering academy, and our students take Capstone their senior year to culminate their engineering and PBL experience with us here at Metza.
Inquisitive skills, what I want to find out more about. I think the trick for us as educators is helping them to see all of the possible opportunities.
Because our kids need to know how to look at a document, how to source a document, how to decide, is this going to be useful for me when I'm trying to answer this question?
And I always tell our teachers and even our students, it's time for us to stop educating students for all the world, and it's time for us to educate them for their work.
Maybe a variety of activities. It could be for the younger students Lego, for the older students, it could be building robots, it could be taking apart a computer to see what's inside. There are all kinds of opportunities. It could be making a video. The hardest part about a makerspace is for the adults to step back, get out of the way, and let the students problem solve and create.
I think it's a combination of both. I think really where we're going with education, we have so much information that is at our fingertips through our smartphones or our computers or whatever. So, I don't have to hold all of those pieces of information in my head forever because I can look them up very quickly. But what we really want to help our kids do is be creative, be thinkers. How can I take the information that I can access and utilize that to come up with something new? How can I help them to be creative and think about what are the possible solutions that we're going to need in the future and come up with a product that's going to help us develop that solution?
So, Capstone, it is a completely student-led class. The teacher is really only in there to hear our presentation at the end of the course and to kind of guide us and remind us of deadlines along the way. But right now, me and my friend Reed, we had an idea over the summer to attach a camera to a drone and basically fly the drone over a plot of land and use a green scale on the camera to detect the ecosystem's health by looking at basically how green it is. So, once we have that data, we are able to use it for water allegation, like we can see where parts are being overwatered and some underwatered, and we can talk with either the owner of that land or the city to be able to reroute some of the water and even save some.
So, we are pleased tonight that Joey Periano and Reed V. Goode are here with us. So, Joey, Reed, and their teacher, Jordan Rios, if y'all will stand so we can welcome you. So, welcome in. So, I asked Joey and Reed what they were texting about what they thought the purpose of education was. Joey, will you share with us what you said?
I share that innovation is most important thing because without change, then we're going to keep having the same problems and nothing's going to change.
And Reed, what about you?
I agree with that. Because in order to have a good student, you have to be a part of it.
Thank you. So, as the educators in the room, we want to encourage this to be a continuing dialogue, that we have to keep seeking how we learn more so that our students can achieve more to become more. And to our board, we would ask you to continue advocacy with our state legislators and with our state board so that we do have education that's really about the purposes here that we've dialogued about this evening, and that we continue to look at the broad purpose and not what is narrowly and easily defined on a test. And we want to do that for the Joey and Reed and the 26,000 other students in CFB and the five million children we serve in Texas public schools. Dr. Burns, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warnock. Mr. Goode, we'd ask the board if they would make any comments or have any questions from our two students today. They are pretty phenomenal kids. We are really fortunate to have them in our district. And it starts with a great teacher, so thank you, Ms. Rios, for bringing it up.
Board members, any questions, comments?
So, how does the drone project work that? We're only about a week into it right now, so we're still having the research in progress.
Okay, and you're in the Metza Academy?
Yes.
Great. My son is a Metza graduate. Good luck with it.
And board members, we're going to follow Joey and Reed's project and plan to bring you some updates and some of our future student achievement reports.
I have to comment, things are probably pretty dry now if you're just getting started compared to a few months ago. Pretty dry. And also, it'd be interesting to try to use that to study for West Nile virus because it's in the wet spots that you get the mosquito breeding. So, that might be another tool for identifying where the wet spots are.
Very good. Mr. Matthew.
One of the things I learned from our homework assignment that really stuck out with me, in the last 500 years, we have gone from a society where everything was certain and there were no changes, to a society where nothing is certain and everything changes. So, we better be ready and rolling with the flow.
If I may, let me make a comment that one thing that I did enjoy, because it talked about in the book, the three Rs plus the four Cs. And that is a good indicator of how we have moved beyond what we consider the more agrarian three Rs into something that's much more relevant. You probably are wondering what the four Cs are, so I better tell you. They are communications, collaboration, creativity, creativity and innovation, and critical thinking and problem solving. So, that's the four Cs. And so, it was great to see, put into words, how you identify your past, present, and future. With that, Dr. Burns, anything else?
No, sir.
With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, recognition of special guests and announcements. Dr. Burns, back to you again.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. We'd like to now take a moment to recognize some of the people that make that "how" happen because, you know, we talk all the time about, you know, engaging students, but engaging students are engaged by teachers, engaged by our staff to help them want to learn and be passionate about what they're learning. And so, we have a program called VIP, Very Important Professionals, which recognizes our teachers, our counselors, our librarians, our nurses on our campuses, who have the same goal. It's what can they do to make achievement happen for their students at the highest possible level. And every year, we've been doing this for, I say every year, for the last 25 years, we've been recognizing VIPs. And it dawned on us that, we say a lot of things about them, but we've probably forgotten one critical piece that we should tell them, and that is, thank you. Okay? And thank you a little bit more personally and a little bit more intimate in the fact that just saying thank you is probably not enough. And so, we think there's a lot of power in a note, a note that someone writes to you about their appreciation for what you do. And so, they all have in their bag, in front of them, they have a little box to keep their notes in. And we're going to encourage not only their staff members to write them notes about what they do for their campuses, but any of you in the audience that know these educators, have had these educators in the past, I think they'd really appreciate sometime just getting in the mail, little thank you notes, says, thank you for all that you did. And it's an interesting story about thank you notes because they've done a lot of research in it. People will hold on to a thank you note a lot longer than they held on to the gift. A thank you note means more than necessarily the gift. And there's a lot of power in writing someone a note about thank you. So, VIPs, thank you. I'm just reading your note to you, okay? If I were tweeting it, it would have to be short, so I'd just be, thank you. Ten characters, right? Okay. So, but thank you for all that you do. This year, for our VIPs, we're very fortunate to have a school, community partnership. You know, we talk all the time that schools can't do it alone. We need the community. You know, great community equals great schools, great schools equal great community. But we need the partnership with the corporations and the businesses in our community. And we have a very special partnership with Brookhaven Country Club. In fact, Brookhaven Country Club is donating several things to our VIPs, things like dinner at the club for, I think, a month, I believe, and some other membership privileges at Brookhaven Country Club, just a way to say thanks besides the note. But they are a very valuable partner to us in our school district. They believe in what we do, and we're very fortunate to have Brookhaven Country Club as a partner. And they are very excited to provide you some things to show their appreciation and their thank you. And in fact, I believe we have someone from Brookhaven Country Club, my friend, Ms. Diane Dobus, and we're going to let her come up and just express a little bit more of that appreciation on behalf of the club and the community. Ms. Dobus.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We recognize that education is the importance and the key to the successful, strong communities. And we are proud to partner with CFB ISD and honor you VIPs because without you, our kids wouldn't learn, and we appreciate and value everything that you do every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobus. Thank you. We were obviously very excited that Brookhaven Country Club wanted to do this, but I think they were more excited that they got to do this for the teachers and the staff in our school district. So, we thank them immensely. We're about to recognize our VIPs, and so we have one more instruction for you, and that's for our family members, friends, staff members that you're here tonight. In support of your VIP, please stand when their name is called so we can recognize them together. And so, at this time, we will start our VIP recognitions.
Mr. Goode, will you join me in the front?
Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the board, guests, family and friends, good evening. My name is Matt Warnock. I am honored to serve as the principal at Barbara Bush Middle School. Please help me in honoring and presenting to you Ms. Ida Perkins as the next member of the very important profession of teaching. This is Ms. Perkins' fourth year as a Bush Bronco, but her 31st as a member of the CFB family. She teaches ESL as a Bronco, but has previously served the students of Janie Stark, Blair, Thompson, McCorder, McLaughlin, and spent 17 years as an RL Turner Lion. She has taught ESL, bilingual, RTI English, math, science, recovery lab, and Spanish. She's a graduate of Texas Tech and TWU and is joined by her very proud son, Stephen, this evening. My good friend Bill Shakespeare once said, brevity is the soul of wit. When it comes to speaking about Ms. Perkins, her peers are not very witty. The following are a few condensed excerpts from their reflections. Ida Perkins embodies the utmost dedication to students of any teacher I have ever known. For Ms. Perkins, the students are everything. Ms. Perkins is an amazing advocate for her kids. She is a dauntless champion for her students, both in and out of class. She is truly a servant leader. Ida is a vortex at which, if you're ever described as a vortex, I think you're doing something right. Ida is a vortex of compassion, dedication, and hard work, whose presence makes a huge impact at BBMS. Whether she is teaching an engaging lesson or headed to her after-school soccer club with her shin guards and whistle, she is doing it with all her might. Ida goes to great lengths to ensure that her students are achieving at their highest level. She is a rock star. Ms. Perkins is a teacher that brightens the lives of all of her students. And I personally commonly refer to her classroom as the feel-good classroom. If I'm ever having a bad day, I know that I can step into her classroom at any time and be amazed by the everyday miracles in her room brightening any dark day. Her students had thoughts to share as well, read word for word, and keeping in mind that these students entered Ms. Perkins' world often not speaking a word of English. Thank you for lovely ESL class. "Thank you for lovely ESL class, ESL was my favorite class. When I came to America and came to this school, I didn't know about the school, but when I need help, you helped me with everything. I very love to speak English. Thanks a million times for all you did for me." One student is part of a thank you poem after being exited from ESL, including the, included the following acrostic from her last name that I simply cannot top. P is for potential to teach anyone. E is for ESL best teacher. R is for reading as key of the English. K is for knowledgeable and kindest woman. I is for internationally accepted students and appreciated everyone. N is for naturally talented, kind-hearted, and helpful. And S is for soccer lover and smiling face always. Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for all you do in the Bronco family. CFB and Barbara Bush Middle School are fortunate that you have chosen us as your professional home. Congratulations on being selected as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, President Goode, Dr. Burns, members of the board. My name is Debbie Williams, principal of Kent Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce and honor Brandy Nordman as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Brandy grew up in Cypress, Texas, she attended Texas A&amp;M University where she, I know, y'all had to do that, where she met her husband, Mike. After graduation, Brandy taught pre-K for three years before relocating to New York City, where she continued her career working in first grade. When her first son was born, they decided to move back to Texas. The first time I spoke with Brandy, she had just gotten off a plane from a European vacation and agreed to interview at Kent the following day. With jet lag and all, I knew Brandy was a perfect fit for our campus. She is now in her fifth year of teaching second grade. In the classroom, Ms. Nordman takes time to know all her students and put, and always puts the students' needs above her own. Her kind and caring nature make her, makes every child feel special and loved. The atmosphere in Brandy's classroom motivates students to be creative and to stretch their thinking. Ms. Nordman is willing to try new things to improve her practice. She models for students and supports students in gaining the confidence to take risk in their own learning. Ms. Nordman is a leader of teachers. She attended the week-long Teachers College Reading Institute this summer. She dedicated, she is dedicated to improving her craft and supports the learning of other teachers at Kent. Brandy volunteers to be on every committee. In addition, Brandy adds an artistic flair, an artistic and crafty flair, and bling, to everything she touches. Her caring and considerate nature makes her the perfect teammate. Brandy is always thinking of others, you would never know she is having a bad day because she doesn't show it. Instead, she would ask you how your day is. And here's the perfect example. This summer, the Kent staff spent a day reviewing data and preparing campus goals for our school year. Brandy sent me a text stating she was sorry she couldn't be there for the meeting because she was on the way to the ER. Most people would leave it at that, but not Brandy. Later, she sent a text saying she was going into surgery in a few minutes, but she didn't stop there either. She followed up by sending a text that she was out of surgery, doing fine, and wondered how the meeting went. So that's dedication, that is a great cardinal. Ms. Nordman stops at nothing to complete a task, and let me set the stage for this story. Brandy was nine months pregnant and determined to work until the very last possible minute, and that is the key word here, minute. Sparing you all the details, Brandy nearly delivered her secondborn child while standing in her classroom one evening because she was working late. In true Brandy fashion, she drove herself home and then waited to go to the hospital, she had to wait on her husband to get home. In addition, Brandy is loyal, devoted mother and wife. Her family is here with her tonight, her husband, Michael, son Max, and son Tate. When she isn't teaching, she's a busy mom chasing the boys around all the time. Kent is very proud to recognize Brandy Nordman as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, my name is Dreama Mayfield, Principal La Vida Elementary. It gives me great pleasure to present our member of the very important profession of teaching, Jamie Shields. It is often said that teachers wear many hats throughout the school day, and tonight we will see the various hats that Jamie wears at La Vida. Our first hat is a cowgirl hat. Now Jamie, notice the bling, because that describes you quite well here. Jamie grew up in Oklahoma, moved to Texas, and has been in CFB for the last 12 years. Some of her family is here tonight to support her, but I could tell you that her family has made the drive from Oklahoma to La Vida every spring, to chaperone, to chaperone students going on a kindergarten field trip to the zoo, or to move Jamie from one classroom to another. Cowgirl, it just so happens to be the name of her dog. Ms. Shields deserves this crown because she is the queen of technology. She is our webmaster and the go-to person with any technology question. It's not uncommon to hear the staff say, "Jamie, help, Jamie, I need you." Jamie, it's not working. Jamie is definitely the computer expert when she's assisting the staff with their uncooperative technology. Our students are engaged in using technology in the classroom because every year, Jamie writes and receives a grant to enhance the technology in her classroom. The next hat is a construction hat, because Jamie builds a relationship with her students, the staff, and the community. Jamie has served as our PTA president and creates the yearbook every year. Her designs never cease to amaze us. The firefighter's hat symbolizes the fires that Jamie puts out. She's been a team leader, a math coach, and each summer, she writes curriculum for our district. Well, our pilot's hat signifies how she navigates the students to be successful in our math competition and to be eager to participate in our science fair. Well, as a conductor, Ms. Shields always finds the right speed to get her students on board. She can slow the train down for a reteach when needed, and she challenges all students to never stop moving toward their goals. And the last hat is a policeman's hat, because Ms. Shields is very protective of her students. She believes that with love and patience and high expectations, all students can learn and be successful. Our hats are off to Ms. Shields as a member of a very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, and members of the board. I'm Jody Williams, and I'm the principal at Janie Stark Elementary. We are here tonight to introduce you to our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Leslie Keane. Mrs. Keane has been a member of the Stark family for 19 years. Leslie grew up in Houston and graduated from Texas Women's University. During her first year as a teacher, she was split between Stark and Central as a kindergarten teacher. And fortunately for us, she came back and continued her teaching, continued her teaching career at Stark. She has taught third grade, first grade, second grade, and one year, thank you very much, Leslie, she did a stint as a mixed-age teacher, and that was, yes, and April was with you on that. And now she has been back in second grade for several years. Mrs. Keane has lived in Carrollton for 21 years, and her three children who are here tonight are all CFB students. Aiden is in third grade, and she is in two-way dual at Janie Stark. Landry is in seventh grade at Vivian Field, also in two-way dual. And Chandler is in 11th grade at RL Turner. She started school before two-way dual was around, or she would also be in two-way dual. Mrs. Keane, or Mr. Keane, Kyle is here also, and he is a graduate of RL Turner. And Leslie is a very strong proponent and supporter of our dual-language program. She is a dedicated educator, and she uses every opportunity to make sure the students at Stark are achieving at their highest level. She takes great care to communicate with parents and to get them involved in their child's learning. She strives to have parents part of the solution. Leslie is Stark's go-to expert on technology, I think there's a theme. She is especially knowledgeable about grade book. The teachers at Stark have the following to say about Mrs. Keane. Leslie is always willing to share. She has a helpful attitude. The most used phrase at Stark is "ask Leslie." She just did a training yesterday afternoon with all of our new teachers on grade book, and they were very thankful. We appreciate Leslie's patience and expertise, both with students and with the adults. She has helped me on many occasions with scheduling, this year in fact, and apparently I didn't get it right. She had to help me again, and I appreciated it. Janie Stark continues to be a great school because of teachers like Leslie, who truly believe that all students can learn at high levels. We at Janie Stark are pleased that Leslie continues in the profession of teaching and chose to teach at Janie Stark. Please help me honor Leslie Keane as our newest VIP.
We're going to shift from VIP to MVP here in just a minute. In addition to our teaching staff, we also have the support staff that kind of makes sure everything happens, or the teachers can do their job. So we started recognizing that staff through our Making a Vision Possible MVP program, because we felt like they're a critical part. Every team, every player on the team makes a difference, and so we wanted to recognize them. And what we know about this group is they get recognized because, not because they deliver, but because they over-deliver on customer service. That's how they get recommended and get selected as an MVP, because you over-delivered customer service, either internal staff or our external customers. So, we have one MVP, we used to do him in June, but he couldn't be here, but we wanted to recognize him, and tonight, perfect, I'm sure your buddy Ranchview is going to introduce our newest MVP.
Good evening, Mr. Goode, Dr. Burns, and members of the school board. My name is Sherry Scratch, and I have the privilege of serving as the principal at Ranchview High School. Tonight, we recognize Mendy Barajas as our MVP. Mendy goes above and beyond every day to make sure each and every student feels welcome and comfortable at our school. Mendy is one of our records clerks at Ranchview. Because we don't have a registrar on our campus, Mendy meets with families and assists them as they navigate the oftentimes confusing paperwork to enroll a student, especially when they come from a very different school system outside the United States. She takes the time to sit with families, answer questions, and clarify which documents are required for them. Even on her busiest days of enrollment in August, Mendy always has a smile for each family and makes them feel welcome. She creates the feeling that they are the most important customer for her at that moment. Mendy's care and support of our students doesn't stop with the enrollment paperwork. It is not uncommon to see Mendy have students stop by her office during lunch for a friendly face or an encouraging word during the day. Mendy easily takes on the role of unofficial mentor for many of our students, monitoring their grades and attendance, and providing that motherly kick in the tail when the student is not living up to his or her potential. Mendy Barajas makes our vision possible because she, the work she does is not defined by her title. She is a quiet, resilient influence who sees a need and just fills it. We are extremely fortunate to have Mendy Barajas in our Wolf Pack. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, that concludes our recognition section of the board meeting tonight.
Very good. If you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes, it's always a privilege on behalf of the school board to say thank you to so many in our school district. Whether it be those outside of our school district, such as Brookhaven Country Club, their willingness to participate and recognize what we do in CFB ISD. So, to Diane, assuming you're still here, thank you very much for representing Brookhaven Country Club, but especially to our VIPs and MVPs. We don't have the opportunity to be on campus every day to observe and to realize the impact and the importance that every one of you do to assist our students, whether it be in the educational aspect of it, or the administrative aspect of it. But because of you, we have the privilege of opportunity to represent an extremely high-performing public school district in the state of Texas, which we represent you by speaking at almost any opportunity and any venue to tell them how great and how CFB ISD is achieving at a high-performing level with all of our students. So on behalf of the board, we thank you for what you do to make us also look good. So thank you all. At this time, we'll move on to the next agenda item. What we're going to do, first, if I may make an announcement, if you are here and would like to speak to the board, which we encourage you to do so, if you have any comments you would like to make, we would encourage you to, outside the double doors to my left, you'll find a form to fill out, and give that to Ms. Grifner, and at the appropriate time after, on the agenda, you will be called up to speak to the board. With that being said, at this time though, it is 7:50 PM, I know you would love to spend all the rest of the evening with us, however, we will take a 10-minute break so that -- However, we will take a 10-minute break so that you have an opportunity, all of you, to recognize our VIPs and MVP. Guests, as I stated previously, this is a mechanism that we use to collect information from our audience, and all of your comments should pertain to our public education system. Our timekeeper, Mr. Shore, will provide you with hand signals to indicate when your three minutes is approaching. Just remember that the board may not discuss or interact with you in any way during the meeting, assuming that that issue that you wish to talk about is not on our agenda for discussion. I have, from Ms. Grifner, two. Are there any others, Ms. Grifner?
No, sir, there aren't.
Very good. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Tara Herbacek to come up, introduce herself, and please state where you live.
Good evening, President Goode, members of the board, Dr. Burns, and staff. My name is Tara Herbacek. I live at 1406 North Main Street in Carrollton, Texas, and I have the pleasure of serving on the CFB Council PTA Board this year. Dr. Burns provides regular district updates and information to Council PTA, and you all support us with attendance at your Council, at our Council PTA meetings. So as part of our continued relationship, we wanted to return the favor. As you might know, a Council PTA is composed of local PTA units as approved by the Texas PTA and is organized for many reasons, the main one being to unify and strengthen local units comprising that council. CFB Council PTA is embarking on a year of change. Our goal and focus is to go back to the basics of supporting and engaging our local PTA units and to continue to encourage our locals to promote the main reasons for PTA, parent education, family engagement, and advocacy. Our action plan for this is to continue to build on community relationships and encourage additional relationships with local PTAs to enhance the engagement of our families in their schools and communities. Reorganize our Council PTA meetings to be more informative and engaging, with a special focus on a particular topic each month while showcasing the successes of our local PTAs. We will use the opportunity to share information with all our PTA leaders on what's happening in our schools with regards to PTA. We will also provide more opportunities to our PTA leaders for training and networking so we can have engaged and informed PTAs in our schools, as well as develop future Council PTA leaders. That's a brief summary of the many discussions and ideas we've had over the past few months and are currently working to implement. We will be back. We look forward to providing you updates as to our efforts and plans as the year goes on so that you are informed about the actions of your PTAs within our district. So thank you so much for your continued support of PTA and for backing the future.
Thank you, Tara. The next item, our next person is John Delorme. John?
Good evening, President Goode, board. I'd like to speak again on Agenda Item 6, Letter B, and I will be speaking on this topic as long as it's on the agenda. This is concerning the potential pending litigation. Once again, I hope to urge the board to resolve this quickly. It is a waste of taxpayer money and against our focus of excellence in education and CFB. That being said, I also would like to reiterate my neighborhood's position and probably the entire west of 35 area of the school district. I live at 6643 Daleon Street, Irving, Texas 75039. I live in Ascena, Los Colinas, and I am a voting member of the Villas of Ascena Homeware Association. We're a registered nonprofit with the state of Texas. If we are to change the election system, if ultimately that occurs, I would urge the board, if we do go to some type of single-member district situation, to create a district west of 35 so that the voters in Irving and Capel, Western Farmers Branch, and Western Carrollton have an opportunity to elect a board member. We are the highest value commercial and residential property within the school district. We are providing a large source of revenue along with the Los Colinas Tiff, and we would certainly have, would like the opportunity to elect a board member as people east of 35 would in any type of single-member district scenario. There is no question that the former Hackberry School District has become the economic engine of CFB, and we would like that opportunity to be represented. We are strongly opposed to any type of gerrymandering districts that would divide us or shatter us where we would not actually have a voice in a school board election. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 4B, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism we use to approve a number of routine items with a single vote. And in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the board has had been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, the board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. At this time, board members, regarding Agenda Item 4B, the Consent Agenda, are there any items you would like to remove for further discussion? Ms. Klein?
4B2.
4B2, very good. Board members, are there any other items you would like? Administration? Hearing none, seeing none. Board members, you've had ample opportunity to review everything on the Consent Agenda. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of Item 4B2?
Agenda as presented, with the exception that we remove Item 4B2.
Very good. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Shore? I have a motion and a second. Board members, any discussion? If not, please signify your approval by raising your hand. Very good. One, two, three. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Fleming, you were just two words ahead of me. Agenda Item 4B, which is Consider Approval of Changes to Board Policies CH Local and CV Local. This is the second reading. Ms. Klein?
I just wanted to ask staff, I understand some of the changes are mandatory, and I support those, but I'm kind of confused because I'm not aware of problems with preparing items to be approved by the board. I would prefer some sort of work study or something that could detail the impacts of not having this higher threshold limit for approval.
He's, and his group have done the most, obviously, work on this particular item.
Sure. The board's mostly familiar, but for the benefit of the audience and the recording audience, these are two policy changes the staff is recommending that raises the dollar thresholds of what staff can proceed with action on without actually having advanced board approval. What we're suggesting is to take for general purchases of the district, that threshold limit from $25,000, I'm sorry, from $50,000 to $100,000, and for construction-related items from $50,000 to $250,000. This isn't, hasn't been a critical problem in the past. We've had to make some exceptions, particularly in the summer months when we don't have a board meeting in July. Sometimes we've, I won't say bent the rules, but we've done some things a little in advance of authority just to get like air conditioning units and the light put on, and we can still keep working within those limits. What we were trying to accomplish here was be, have a little bit more flexibility in addressing district and campus needs, and candidly, we're modeling at least one of our neighbors. We have recently hired a member of the Irving ISD staff to work in our purchasing department, and this policy change is, pretty much mirrors their policy. But as Ms. Klein said, those dollar thresholds are really only one piece of this recommendation, and we can live with not changing the thresholds, or if you want to have a compromised amount, that would be helpful. But we would recommend the other changes in the policy. The other changes specifically relate to, as Ms. Klein mentioned, the more or less mandatory requirement that we have language in our policy that says that we will comply with federal purchasing rules and regulations, and some flexibility to not bring items back to the board that are recurring or normal in nature, things like utility bills and things that are recurring payments on contracts, that the board has already approved the contracts for the total payments, but we just have progress payments and have to come back to ask your approval on a progress payment for something that we've approved the whole contract on, frankly, doesn't make a lot of sense. And we haven't done it in the past. We just frankly are cleaning up our practices to match our policy a little bit. So with those, with that explanation, and again, this is not a critical element, it's just a suggestion on our part. We think it's a reasonable operating process. It would definitely make it easier for us to address issues, but we can work within our existing limits if you'd like us to.
What's the message that change orders shall not exceed an increase of 25% of the total awarded contract, but now it just says the statutory limit? Can you explain if that's something you would leave in, or if that's...
We'd like to leave that in.
Can you explain what that means?
Well, let me read it again to make sure that I'm not...
It's under change orders.
Right. Are you looking at the explanation or the actual policy?
The policy.
Yeah, that's, let's see.
CH Local, change orders.
I'm sorry, that's on the CV Local?
No, well, it says CV Local, but it's under the CH. Well, it's CV Local, sorry.
It's got to be C.
Page 16 of the agenda.
I'm clearly on a different page 16 than you are.
Can I help?
Yeah. Please.
I don't have it open in front of me, but I believe the 25% rule, that's a statutory requirement, and that's one we won't change, nor could we. But basically, if we have a contractual amount, and we cannot come back to you with a change order over 25% of the board-approved amount. So that remains in effect, and we will not change that one, nor could we.
Thank you. It looks like it's being changed on here.
We took the 20, the specific 25% out, and I'm going to speak for Rick. What that allows us to do is whatever the statutory limit is, it will float with the statutory limit rather than stake the 25% in policy, and then if the law changes, we're not in compliance with the law anymore.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Sorry, it took me so long to find it.
Mr. Shore?
Ms. Klein's not coming.
Oh.
No, I'm okay with Mr. Shore asking a question.
I heard you say that this would model what a neighboring district is doing.
Yes, sir.
I've never been a very strong proponent of doing something because somebody else does it. If that's the best argument you have for doing this, then I think you're losing support from one board member on this, and I'm focusing my comments on the limits that you don't need board approval.
Sure.
So if the reason is because somebody else is doing it, in my mind, that's a pretty specious reason.
And I agree with that, and I misspoke if that's the impression you got. The reason we're doing this isn't because Irving's doing it. The reason we're doing this is to allow the staff, and especially our operations staff, a little bit more flexibility to respond rapidly to needs on the campuses. The only reason we refer to the Irving practice is in looking at other districts, at least one other district, we were testing our own reasonableness of whether or not this is, I won't say a standard practice, but at least...
How big is their budget?
Excuse me?
How big is their budget?
Irving's budget is probably really close to ours, maybe slightly less.
Less than ours?
Is it more? You didn't remember what it is?
They have about 30, this might give you some reference, they have about 32,000 students, we have 26,000 students, so.
Their budget would arguably be a third larger than ours.
Apparently. Maybe a little less, but...
If we don't approve the increase in the limits, will we be diminishing the performance of our core function of whatever one of those four things you stood by earlier today? Will we be diminishing that?
No, sir, I don't believe so, no, sir. There may be some modest impact on environment. I mean, if we have some, like I said, if we have a system failure or something that we need to react rapidly to...
Call us, we'll meet in 72 hours.
We can do that.
And can't you make emergency purchases?
Under this purchasing policy that you're dealing with here, that's, this is not even a statutory requirement, so we could create some kind of emergency purchase deal that we would have to change policy to create something like that. What you're probably thinking about is the emergency bidding authorization. That's really very restrictive, and we're not really talking about a bid issue, we're just talking about board approval of the purchase.
I have another question. There's a long paragraph in CH Local about purchasing authority.
Uh huh.
And it starts with regardless of value.
Rick, you want to explain purchasing authority?
What we're trying to achieve here is, because most of these contracts you've already acted upon, but our policy currently states that any single purchase of 50,000 or more has to be approved by the board, but you have already approved the bid or the RFP or the cooperative contracts that we are utilizing, knowing that we're going to be utilizing them for various purposes, whatever the school district's needs are. In CV, that would be in construction-related, facilities-related purchases, and in CH, pretty much everything else. A lot of that could be textbooks, it could be a software program that we need, it could be anything to do with technology that they're trying to accomplish, you know, and that is why that most of those items, and I hate to use this term, but for lack of a better term, a lot of those things are rubber-stamp things. They're consent agenda items that you know we have to have to operate, they are routine items, they're routine items that we really can't do without, and if it's a major purchase over 100,000, and in a district our size, you have to understand almost everything we buy costs a lot of money because we're buying it district-wide. And so while this statutory limit of bids for the state of Texas is $50,000, you have to remember that the vast majority of school districts in the state of Texas are, have fewer than 10,000 students. And so that, they're trying to, the legislature is trying to craft a law that applies to a very small district with 100 students or 200 students, as well as Houston ISD with 180,000 students. And it's very difficult for those of us that are considered large school districts, but still in the minority of the number of school districts in the state of Texas, it makes it very difficult for us and creates a lot of paperwork. Like I spend about between three and five days a month preparing board agenda items. Well, that's 20 to 25% of my time. And so in trying to be more efficient and more effective, we want to be able to purchase the routine items of the district that you routinely approve, and we can go back and look at the minutes and see where you've routinely approved these. That's what I did. I went back and reviewed all of these over about the last year, year and a half in board agendas, and it just seemed like there was not a lot of opposition, that you trusted the administration to make good decisions in these purchases, and therefore, that was the argument that I made when I was at Irving and changed that policy. And after we changed our policy there, many other school districts in the area changed their policy to a similar model, Great Vine Colville, Garland, there's some others around that have made similar changes in their policy. And because those contracts have already been acting on it, it's a bit redundant, though not, it doesn't track exactly parallel.
Well, and a lot of the purchasing contracts that I am comfortable approving are blanket with no real numbers in them, and that's why I'm more comfortable seeing the item come back with the numbers. I feel like it helps us be better board members to have that information. So with the idea of transparency and our responsibility at this time, unless I can, and I'm not comfortable with the regardless of value, that sounds like no matter what the amount is? the amount is, I would propose to take that paragraph out and leave the limits at the previous limits unless we have a chance to do further study into what the impact is or what the impact of not changing it is.
Where's the language, Ms. Klein, guide me to where you're...
It's the paragraph with regardless of value, the board delegates to the superintendent-designate.
CH local.
It's under CH local.
Right.
I don't understand the regardless of value, what that means to me is no matter the dollar value.
Oh, I'm gonna read the, the first section specifically is talking about materials purchased under the EMAT system. That's instructional materials that used to be delivered to the district through the textbook program.
And that's part of my question is what have we done before, because this just seems very different.
Right. In the old days, we didn't do anything because the books just showed up in the warehouse from Texas, and we weren't really buying anything, if you will. So hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of textbooks were just sent from Texas, you know, we would send then how many kids we had in each section, and they would send us the books. When the state went to the instructional materials allotment program, now they assign a dollar allotment to the school district, and even though we still get the books from Texas, we essentially buy the books from the state of Texas. What we're saying here is we're...
That one makes sense, the second one had me confused.
Right, then that's what I was trying to say, that the first section is the one that was written, the EMAT. The second one's on the interlocal co-op purchase.
That's like by board or...
Right, exactly.
The HG...
And other contracts that you've previously approved.
Right. And if you'd be uncomfortable with that, we can strike that one, that's... I would suggest leaving the one in about the EMAT.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize what that could be.
I understand that.
Can I make one comment about that?
Sure.
EMAT is one source of our textbooks, but today, as Ms. Warnock could verify, that many of our textbooks we have to buy outside of EMAT, and therefore, we have to, once they are ready to order their textbooks or when they become available, a lot of times the publishers are late getting them to us, we have to place those orders in a very hasty fashion in order to get delivery in time for school to start. That becomes, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have to bring to the board because it's not part of the EMAT system, or it's not a, something that's provided by the district. So, I mean, we have to provide it with our own funds, and so that technically, under the current policy, falls under that where we have to bring the purchase of textbooks and instructional materials that are required for our campuses and our educational process, we have to bring that as an individual purchase on each one of those things. And district-wide, that's a lot of money. I mean, you know that, you've seen those, you approved the correct...
Isn't that over a hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, absolutely.
So that would be over the threshold anyway?
Sure.
If you're sponsoring it.
No, this says no.
Well, no, but that's why it said regardless of value. That way, if the education department needed to order a million and five worth of textbooks out of the IMA fund, they can do so.
And I think we benefit as board members to understand the implications of what this state is doing.
Okay.
We don't want to be saddling you with difficulty, but we benefit from the knowledge of the changes in the procurement and the impacts.
And I think, and hopefully I'm not misremembering what we ended up putting together, we're still suggesting that we leave our purchasing report at the same threshold limit, so we do want to be clear to you that what we're doing, we don't want to, something to go on behind your backs and you not know we're doing it. We would still bring to you a list of items that we've purchased that were over the old threshold limits so that you would have, you know, current knowledge of everything we're doing. And again, don't, it seems like we're debating a little bit, and when, it's really not a crisis issue on those threshold limits. Again, we're suggesting it, we think it's a good idea, if you're uncomfortable with it, that's absolutely not going to present a big problem to us. Again, the end of that paragraph you were just looking at, the paragraph that starts when federal funds are spent, that's probably the only thing that I'm absolutely asking you to approve tonight. Within, other than that, I'm relatively easy.
Mr. Shakman.
Mr. Good, obviously, as a board, we're very concerned about transparency and accountability.
Absolutely.
And our accountability is always at its highest levels, and I know all of our board appreciates all of the folks that work in finance in our district with that regard, and I think we all share that we want to be super accountable, super transparent. I'm a little concerned about the increase in limit just because it's a big jump. We just jumped a couple of years ago from twenty-five to fifty, and so now, within the space of about twenty-four months, suddenly we are talking about going way past that. Another concern that comes up in this discussion is the whole matter we deal with our consent agenda. I'm not sure we are as transparent as we could be with the community when we're approving four, five, six, ten million dollars worth of stuff in our consent agendas. Most of our local communities and most of our local school districts are using work studies where the community is invited to come and ask questions and participate, and there's an open dialogue about consent agenda issues and items. And I would like to suggest as a board that we need to take a serious look at how we're doing all of that, and I don't think we are getting the most bang for our buck from our current work-study system. But as we look at all of this, you know, the whole notion of how do we accurately and fairly get the community to know that what all is going on, it's a little troublesome to say suddenly we're going to go now to, we're going to start purchasing all this. Let me throw an example, here's one. If I were to go today to our checkbook online system, where would I find the expenses for the most recent Learn More, whatever it was, the big seminar thing that we did? It's not there. I can't find it anywhere I looked because I've had two people ask me how much that cost the district. There are taxpayers, one in Carrollton and one in Irving, they aren't part of the district, but they heard about it from staff members and they asked how much it cost. I said, I'm not sure, I said if they wanted to, they could certainly call, leave a question here. But then after they asked that question, I went and started trying to look for it, I can't find it. It's broken up in whatever, you know, however, and I'm just concerned that we make sure that transparency is always our preeminent issue. We want to be as clear to our communities as possible because we have great schools and we do a great job with our money. We just want to make sure we have everybody knowing that that's the case.
Very good. Board members, other questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none. Ms. Klein.
It really helps keep me informed to have it on the consent agenda, and with that in mind, I would appreciate the opportunity to make a motion to approve CH local with the mandatory changes and then ask Mark, what else was it that you wanted to include? Mr. Hyatt?
Well, the, it's the last paragraph of the purchasing authority section where it says when federal funds are spent.
Okay.
And candidly, I would also like to include the first section of that, where we're talking about EMAT funds.
Okay, the number one, not the number two?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's number one, not number two.
Importantly, I'm just trying to stay informed, a lot does change, a lot is flying past, rules change, and we go to legislative updates to tell us all the things that are happening. It helps us to process them if we see it ourselves somewhat.
Sure.
Yeah, so I would make a motion to adopt the mandatory changes plus the purchasing authority, part one, and then the mandatory part at the end.
Why don't we do this, and I don't want to overkill, and I know the processes, is making this kind of change, why don't, if, could we give a redo on reading too?
Just pull it.
And that way you get to see it clearly, what we end up writing, because I'd hate to have some kind of miscommunication between what you're asking us to do and then I think I'm doing what you asked us to do and it ends up being a policy you really didn't mean. So unless anybody, oh, we do need that. You're right. Actually, that federal requirement's actually started September 1st, so we're a little behind the curve already. So, all right, we will do what you said. I can go back to the tape and I think I can match it up.
Thank you. So I make that motion.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, if I may, further discussion?
What's the mandatory changes?
It's just the language on the bottom of the purchasing authority says when federal funds are spent, the purchase of a goodness service, the district administration shall follow regulation, statute, standards, and rules applicable to those federal funding sources. It's just a statement that we're going to comply with, is what we're supposed to comply with.
And I believe, Ms. Klein, point of clarification, there's nothing in CV local that needs to be retained, is that correct? We need to make sure, we're only talking about CH local so far. I want...
Corey.
Is that correct?
My understanding is you're approving CH local as amended and we're tabling CV local.
Do I have, I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Matthews, any further discussion? Point of clarification, we are approving CH, CV local in its entirety.
No.
With the exception, well, correction.
CH.
With the removal of the limits.
And that's not, that was not my understanding of the motion, Ms. Klein. We're just approving, the only change you're approving in CH is the federally mandated statement and the EMAT purchases.
Instructional materials. What are we doing with CV local?
In CV, we're not approving at all.
Okay.
Again, trying to...
Is that part of your motion?
Correct.
Okay, that was not stated specifically, I was trying to bring it back. Okay. Board members, we're only discussing and approving changes to CH local only, which would be that middle paragraph two, with the exception of paragraph two with the removal of, what, which item is it, one or two?
Two, removal of two.
The approval to purchase under the interlocal cooperative. Okay. Is that clear as mud to everybody?
I agree with that statement. Thank you, dude.
Okay, I believe, I believe it's fully understood. Mr. Hyatt, if I may, what would you like to do, just for clarification, with CV local? Is that going to come back?
At the board's pleasure, we can come back at a later time with some more information, but as of tonight, I understand, my understanding is you'd just like to take a pass on this one.
Okay, very good. Okay, board members, I think you understand what we are approving in CH local only. If you understand it, all those in favor of Ms. Klein's motion, please signify by raising your hand. You must understand because that is unanimous. Thank you. No, I wasn't going to restate it. With that being said, and that voted on, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is comments from board members. Board members, any comments regarding posted agenda items? Mr. Fleming?
I'd like to make one regarding six B, Ramos versus CFB ISD. You know, back in May, I talked a little bit about term limits and, and the fact that I felt that we need to have some type of term limits. I think in order to broaden the opportunities for public service and to assure elected officials of Carrollton Farmers Branch boundaries are responsive to citizens' need. So I figured we probably would start framing up what this would look like. So I kind of just threw some, throwing something out there. No board members of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD shall serve no more than two consecutive terms in office. Board member terms being three years. Term limitations would apply to all board members previously completed terms, therefore be retroactive. Board members who are over their terms, over two terms, will roll off the board upon expiration of their current terms. After expiration of board member's terms, he or she must sit out, you know, six years in order to, before they run again. I think this is something we need to start talking about as a group if we truly want to design some type of framework for term limits, either be a study session or look during a committee or what, but we need to get this, we need to get the framework of how we want to do something like this if this is every board member's wish. That's all that I have.
Okay. Board members, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to agenda item six, which is closed meeting as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personal matters, 551.076, security devices, 551.082, school, children, district employees, delivery disciplinary matter or complaint, 551.0821, personally identifiable student information, and 551.084, investigation. Specifically under agenda item six is 6A pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase of real property. Agenda item 6B is pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with our legal counsel regarding pending and anticipated litigation against the district. Civil action number three, colon fifteen dash CB dash zero one two three nine dash D, Ramos versus Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District at all pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Texas, and agenda item 6BC, the annual evaluation of superintendent. What we will do, board members, we will recess and go into the other room, and we will therefore discuss these items as stated. Therefore, this public meeting is recessed at eight thirty-four PM, and we will reconvene in closed session.
Do you guys feel ready? There you go.
Board members, this public meeting portion is reconvened at ten thirteen PM. We will move to agenda item seven, and that is reconvene public meeting to vote on matters considered in closed meeting, specifically 7A, consider and take possible action regarding pending litigation, civil action number three, colon fifteen dash CB dash zero one two three nine dash D, Ramos versus Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District at all pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Texas. Is there anything that this board would like to take action on?
Do you side adjourned?
Pardon?
Do you side adjourned?
We'll get to that in a minute, Mr. Shore. Specifically, anything regarding agenda item seven? Hearing none, seeing none, no action will be taken. We'll move on to agenda item eight. And by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at ten fourteen PM. Thank you very much.